I'll call the leading board of February 4th and ask...
That's right. You guys, I want to thank you for the many lessons that you've given us throughout our lives. Thank you guys for our school system and the lessons you've given us here. You guys really want to pray to God as we go into this meeting today, undertake your business, of this business, God, we pray about that you be with us and that you please, guys, try to give us wisdom that may serve our students in this county. We just want to pray about your rich lessons, the voice of one of us, but pray God for our schools, God, just place a hedge protection around our school system. We do love you, we thank you, we praise you for all the children, so thank God, surprise all of us this week. I'll introduce this folks today, this is, uh, this is, I don't know, invited nine, actually invited ten of them, but this is the majority of our wrestling, middle school wrestling team. These students right here, what, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them made it today. Uh, these are our individual Smoke Mountain Conference tournament champions. Our wrestling team this year, we actually had nine individual champions. I think we would have hit one if he wouldn't have broke his elbow two weeks ago. But these guys did a great job and they're here to live, bless them.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our religious allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, you know, I tell you, you have to say your name in English, but that's... Do you use different languages? I think what we would like to do, we would like to know who you are, if you could introduce yourselves and tell us what grade you're in and maybe what your plans are, if you thought far enough in that, if you want to go to school, or military, or work, or... We're always interested in that. You want to start? For four years, five, and only in the high school. We'll be watching, we're proud of you, we appreciate the work you do.
I'm probably just a little more on, uh, take on the way of S Cooper up there, he was named the most outstanding wrestler at the tournament.
Alright, well, you're welcome.
Very good.
You're a speechless.
You did yours in action, didn't you? You have to make a speech, there you go.
Alright, that's for saying, yeah.
Like you for coming, we're proud of you. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 9th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 13th meeting?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor. Approval of today's agenda. Everybody had time to look it over, do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor. Ms. Knight, we have any individuals or groups to address the board today?
We do not.
Now, we are open for any public comments. Anybody here today that would like to speak? Alright, we will move into director of principals update. Mr. Bassin, for me today?
Good morning. Uh, well, the first semester is now officially... We gave our last test this morning, February 4th, so, uh, we... Not ready yet, but hopefully we will have all our grades completed and our report cards out in the next couple of days, so... The way it is. Uh, our wrestling team had, uh, has had a really good year. They did win the Smoke Mountain Conference with a hint straight here last week. And the tournament on Saturday, they won the tournament and had seven individuals that won, uh, first place in their weight class in the raw Smoke Mountain Conference. And they are competing today in the state dual team. They're on the road, in about thirty minutes they'll be leaving, and they're going to Star Mountain. And they will wrestle Bishop McGinnis tonight in the first round, and hopefully win there, and then wrestle to Star Mountain or East Surrey. And then if they win, they would go to Mitchell, where they're likely on Thursday, and then the state championship for dual teams is on Saturday, so, uh, they've got a good shot.
What do you say they have?
It will be the L East, and that will be determined by which school wins and we hope to provide the Eastern side, so... Be a good trip, they'll be on the road a lot if they make it that far this week. They've had a great year. Our basketball teams do not have a game tonight. We received a form from Manahela. Uh, we play Blue Ridge tomorrow at Blue Ridge, and our senior night is Friday night, so last regular season home game, and that's against Andrew, so, uh, I'd y'all come out to that. Both basketball teams are playing really well, and both still have a shot to win the Smoke Mountain Conference. And Alex Norris, we had all district band tryouts a while ago, and Alex Norris was the only band member we had that received all district honors, and he was third chair, so, really good for him. And we've got the ACT coming up for all of our juniors, that'll be on March 4th, on Tuesday. So, I guess today, the next board meeting, we'll be administering the ACT that way, so, thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Uh, pretty short for me. We're trying to finish in-class testing in K. 3. I could be here three days out of two weeks, but I'm worried about how I'm gonna feel on Friday, that's been part of my whole week. But, uh, also, we're hoping to get report cards on Thursday.
Well, next Monday, the 10th, our eighth grade is gonna be traveling to Youngers, Visiting Planaryum. I'm super excited about that, they've actually, we've scheduled this thing a couple different times now, so hopefully we'll get this one in. Say a little bit about our Alabama Flocks team, we've got, they're organized now, they're starting to prepare for competitions. They hope to have practice with some level of schools, you know, here in this month, and the main competition will be in actual sometime in March. As far as sports goes, our basketball teams have had a great season. The boys finished their season yesterday, they lost in the tournament, but yesterday, they did finish over, with an overall record of thirteen-three, had a real good year. Our girls, uh, they did win yesterday over Cherokee in overtime, which, by the way, Cherokee had beat us both times in the regular season, so you can tell how our girls have improved and have been really good, so they have a chance to the championship game on Thursday. Right now, their current record is eleven and four. Saw our wrestlers around a minute ago, they've also had a great season. I'm not saying I believe in twelve, no, no, Kevin Schneid has told me on several different occasions that this is the best group of kids they've ever had, and that they're both, not only talent, but character around them, and just that they've done a great job for us, and sure, represented our school very well. I do believe all nine of the students, we had eight, one wasn't here today, but all nine of our students are wanting to, they're going to the walling and participating in middle school state championships this week. As far as spring sports, basketball softball very soon, start tryouts, and track will begin sometime in the next couple of weeks. By the way, we, I hope I didn't mess you guys up or nothing, but I did go ahead and issue your report card yesterday. So, I kinda asked for some back, if it's okay.
Ms. Oliver?
I make a motion, this last four made, as far as technology, our works can lead grant, we got, we have new iPad card that's in, being assembled for middle school, and also, Latrice Phillips' classroom, there's like a little side room in there, we're gonna turn that back into a computer lounge, those computers are ordered, should be in any time, probably this summer before we actually put it in, because we're gonna get maintenance, actually put a new door going in there, so we don't have to disturb Latrice' class going in, so... And there's quite a bit of staff available, and then we've got to see if you put the Stanley grant. Testing, they've loaded some, it used to be testing, you thought positive kids, now it's the elementary, they test year-round at same block, so they're finishing up another round in class in the mouse. And I'll probably forget some testing's going on. All the standard one kids, grades three, twelve, will have to field test here pretty soon. I've got to have all that paperwork in for the week. It's an online test, it's from the University of Kansas. We also, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, the entire groups will have to do the reading, the math, online, field testing, and that's for a different group. It's a private test and research group. We did ask if we could get out of any of this, and we were told, well, the general assembly has passed this, so no, it was laws, we ended up doing field test. Uh, the access test are in for the ESL students, we have eighteen, actually nineteen now. We have a new high school girl in row last week from Honduras, does not speak a word of English. So, the high school's doing a good job trying to deal with that, but she will become the ninth day student, so she'll also have to take the access test, which has to be finished sometime in March. The ACT is next year, March 4th, that's a big undertaking for the high school. And, you know, I probably forgot to do three things, we get all this kind of, the way they start, time to start it on the EOGs and EOCs at the end of the year, and, uh, lot of assessments with State North Carolina.
Mr. Smith, you're back, I'll be looking for your personal...
Ms. Knight, we'll be bringing to you in close session, a recommendation for a elementary teacher position. Also, we have a teacher wishing to resign, should be bringing that to you. And then we have the scores contracts, and also the volunteer list to write to you during close session.
Mr. Green?
In your, uh, in your packet, I've given you two groups of documents stapled together. Uh, the first that I'll go over will be the budget amendments. And there are several of these, some aren't as significant as others, so I'll go through these quickly. First few pages are budget amendments to the state public school fund. The first section there is PRC 103, non-instructional support. We receive additional funding of $1,193, plan to use that for subsidies. Next section is PRC 13, vocational education, and that appears to be a reduction of funding of $23,420. PRC 13 is for salary and benefits mostly, and each year we have some months of employment that are unused, so we are reallocating, uh, months of employment into PRC 14, which is also a vocational education pot of money. We're waiting on, uh, a recommendation from Rhonda Anderson as to where she would like those, that reallocation to be posted. Next, PRC 15, school technology fund, which we have received an additional $2,406, and plan to use a majority of that for software and the remainder for workshop expenses. Next section, PRC 19, small school supplement funding. This appears to be, uh, an addition of funding, it's not, it's ABC transfer, where we transferred $7,240 out of textbooks into PRC 19 to pay for some items that we've purchased that are not textbook listed. Last section, PRC 25, Indian Gaming Fund, we've received $962, plan to use that for supplies. Next page, please. These budget amendments are also for the state public school fund, this is PRC 30, digital learning. We've received an additional funding of $4,537, and plan to use a majority of that, $3,000 for stipends for staff, attending, staff development. Next is PRC 32, exceptional children, this is a reduction in funding of $3,762, and I will take that from supplies. Next is PRC 56, transportation. The state gives us seventy-five percent of our lock in the beginning of the year. This appears to be additional funding, that's the remaining twenty-five percent that given us, is $51,295, plan to spend fifteen thousand supplies, ten thousand repair parts, and twenty-five thousand for fuel, the remainder will be for oil. And then the last section there, PRC 130, textbooks, this is where I've taken the ABC transfer of the $7,240 out of textbooks and into PRC 19. Next page, please. Uh, these are also budget amendments to the state public school fund. PRC 63, special program funds for EC, this is a new pot of money that we've received, it's $11,061. We've planned to pay a person, we have a student that requires one-on-one assistance during a portion of the day, we'll pay that person using the substitute code. And then the last section, PRC 73, school connectivity, we received an additional $2,063, which we plan to use for covering catches. Next page, this budget amendment is for federal fund, this is PRC 110. This is the Twenty-First Century Learning Center after-school grant, that grant is for $400,000. You can scan through this budget amendment, it's got quite a few images there. A good portion of this is for coordinators and tutors, and also the after-school director. Any questions about that budget? Okay, next page, please. This is budget amendment, capital outlet fund, and I've spoken the last couple of months about a budget amendment that we need for this, for this fund because of the variance that we've had the last few months. The original budget for capital outlet fund was $81,500. We've actually transferred $300,000 out of Impact Aid into the capital outlet fund, so this increase in the revenue for capital outlet fund, you'll see there, is $218,500, and it brings the total budget up to $300,000. There are a lot of items there listed for items that were not in the original budget, that we did pay for during this fiscal year. Again, in the remaining of the year, there will be additional budget amendments for capital outlet fund. Next page, please, Fund 7, this is Impact Aid. We did receive one page during the year, and on that application, there's a section there called 8003, Section B. That amount of funding is dedicated for children with disabilities, so we had to reallocate, it was actually $12,334 that we've, I've reallocated for supplies for children with disabilities. And then the last page, this is Fund 8, where we account for our grants. First section is PRC 61, this is the Student Support Team Project. Additional, or new round of funding for this grant is $53,900. Majority of those funds can pay for a guidance worker and a social worker, and there are a few, a few dollars there for supplies and materials. And then the last section is PRC 660, STEM grant, Mr. Smith mentioned that earlier. The amount of funding there is $41,000, and a majority of that, $33,000 is budgeting for non-capitalized computers for the computer lab that he mentioned. The good thing about this grant, we have the money up front, we don't have to ask for reimbursement on this. Any questions about the budget amendments?
If I can mention, when I asked Mr. Roy to transfer textbook money to PRC 19, we still use that money to buy books for kids, it's just with the new curriculum adopted by the state, there's very few resources from the state to implement it, so we're having to transfer money so we can buy textbooks for private vendors, but still being used for textbook.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, I knew that you could, you could speak to that much clearer than I can. On the next, I'll talk about the expenditure reports. You see these almost every month, and I was going to briefly, if you will, please just flip to the second page. And I'll talk about the variances for each fund. And keep in mind that these variances are based on the assumption that we will have equal amount expenditures in all twelve months, that's not necessarily the case in every fund. So, the first fund there, the variance, is low current expense fund, we are over budget by nineteen percent. Reason being there, we've had a projection for our timber receipts to be approximately $217,000, and we've already started making expenditures for timber receipts for that part of them. Second is Fund 7, this is Impact Aid. We're over budget by twenty-seven percent, and we had to make some expenditures earlier in the year out of Impact Aid for some of the folks who paid out of federal. Because the federal funding to carry over doesn't always last through the first three months of the fiscal year, and then we receive our federal funding October 1st. Next is Fund 8, this is where we account for our grants, we're over budget by four percent. State public school fund, you can see we're right in schedule there, the variance is zero. Next is federal fund, we are under budget by twenty percent. Next is child nutrition, we're under budget by seventeen percent. And then last is capital outlet, which does not follow that equal twelve-month assumption, we're over budget by fifty-one percent. And again, there will be, uh, more budget amendments to capital outlet by the beginning of the year.
Back to the local, we haven't received our timber receipt yet.
We have not, typically, uh, those, I know there was a period there for a few years where we got those in June, but typically, counties receive those funds, or the school system receives those funds from the counties in the month of February or March, so we should receive that in the next four to six weeks. The lower projection was $217,000, we received eighty percent of that, which will be approximately $175,000. Questions, budget amendments and the expenditure reports?
Next on our agenda is the contract bus transportation, so let me, Ms. Knight, and...
Yeah, I asked for some backup help, just to set the scene. In the last couple of board meetings, Attorney Davis shared with you new statute regarding having to have board approval for contract bus transportation, such as we would use for our middle school and our high school overnight trips, and so I asked for backup from Mr. McPlon on this, but I have to say something before he starts, at this point of the year, I'm pretty sure that Mr. McPlon may be the most important person in our school system. And I just want to give him credit for that, because, you know, this week, I guess he could sleep in a few extra minutes, but, you know, every morning, Mr. McPlon is in a bus stop by all time, Chris.
Usually before, before six, and then for the weather's bad, I'm, I'm, that might be there four, four thirty.
And he and I are talking, but you know what, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not, I don't think he is thunder away, he is the ultimate source when it comes to advising me. He talks to DRT, he talks to Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management, he's out on the roads himself. I don't have to get out and ride the roads, and for that, I'm very thankful. I'd probably send a mister or not, but, but I have to tell you, Chris, how much I appreciate you, because if he tells me that he don't feel like his buses could run, I don't ever, I don't ever question it, because I know he does his buses, and his drivers, and this family, and I appreciate the dedication he casts to our school system, I just want to say, Chris, how much I appreciate you.
Well, I appreciate you too, and I know it's, it's tough, it's tough decisions. You're danged if you do, or danged if you don't, in a lot of parents' eyes. I give criticism sometimes, but I tell you, I'd weigh it up the way on the safe side than on Henderson County's side, making national news with one on the shot. Luckily, nobody got hurt too bad. Uh, before we get into this policy, I just want to say a few things here, I've got a few things I want to touch base on. I want to thank you for being easy to work with, it's a tough job, tough calls, we made very good calls, thank the Lord, that, because it could have got bad, we had one driver that come in and asked us how bad, how quick it got bad the other day. Parked her bus, nothing on the road, dropped her car, couldn't make it home. Now, that's cutting it close, cutting it real close, she had to catch a ride under her house, leave her car. But, uh, I want to thank my crew, with God, you know, I've been a lot on Barbara, and we got Adam on board, a good decision, I think, uh, he's kind of shy, but when you kind of get to know him, he's, he's a good guy. He's a good mechanic, he's a top-notch, and I'm, I'm happy to have him, we've just provided everything he needs, he's still got to get his bus inspection license, which he can score it and inspect now, I just signed off on it, because he's a, he's a dang good mechanic. I want to recognize my bus drivers, my goodness. If you haven't done it, and you, or you have done it, you know what I'm talking about. It's, it's a tough job, trying to keep forty kids in line on the bus. I've done it for the last two or three days, we've had a lot of people out, I've had to drive myself. And it's, it's a tough job, probably the most responsibility there is in this whole school system, driving an eighteen-thousand-pound machine around with all those kids. But anyway, I want to talk about our bus inspections. We got inspected early this year, we have a state inspector come by once a year, and he gives us the grade. And I want to brag on my crew over here again, uh, we got a total of a ten. Now, a ten, let me explain to you what a ten is. If you have a zero, you're perfect. So, every deduction, you add points. State average in the western region is thirty point four one, and we got a ten. I'm very proud of our buses, and, you know, I do take a lot of pride in what we do over here, I think we've got some of the best buses around. Uh, I want to bring up something too, this year, they started inspecting activity buses. That's something they added in, they haven't done that in the past. Uh, so, he pulls off one of our activity buses, we never know what bus he's gonna pull. He told me he'd been doing this job for thirteen years, and he'd never had a perfect bus till he come to Grand County. And he's got about thirty-three counties that he does, and he'd never had a perfect bus till he done our activity bus. Now, you've got to take into consideration, this activity bus is an old seven, we got fourteen years on it, I mean, seven years, excuse me. Got over a hundred thousand miles on this bus, a lot of miles, so I'm, I'm proud of that too. And we didn't know that they were gonna do these activity buses, so it's sitting down there, ready to go, in good shape, and I'm, I'm proud of that. Uh, talk about the cold weather. This is the first year... Uh, talk about the cold weather. This is the first year since I've been working at this school that I've, I've ever seen our fuel gel up. We treat our fuel for jailing. Once tentiers get so low, decent fuel jails. It gelled after Christmas. And it sat there. I looked in the tanks with a flashlight. You could see it. Never seen that before. We've uh, had twenty-three days that we've started school below freezing. Some of them were treacherous. Uh, that's one thing I tell the bus drivers, please be on time. You've got these kids standing out on the side of the road, dick ten or fifteen, twenty degrees, you don't want to stand in there too long. And you've got to be patient on those days too. You know, they might be setting on their house. And that kind of throws some of them off when they're getting to the next stop. Uh, just like Eddie said, I depend so much during this inclement weather on the sheriff department, DOT. I, I called Richard Kirkland up there. I wired his phone out at the time and Shane both. Uh, you know, they're, they're very good to work with us. Anytime we've got an activity bus out and it, it looks like it's bad, all I got to do is call Shane. He'll have a, it's several times this happened, but he'll have a DOT truck meet us at the line. And uh, we can follow the DOT truck in and then phone solid fronts. We, we've done it several times. Uh, one other thing I wanted to touch on, uh, I live on these roads all the time and this old service truck we've got, we are getting a new one. I've never given the number on the trucks. Now, we will have to pay a little money for the four-wheel ride added on the truck, but we will have a new one come late spring. It'll be a F-two-fifty four-wheel ride Ford. So uh, excited about that, getting a new truck. And it only costs us eighteen hundred dollars, so I'm taking that with me. That'd be great.
Do I get a big one?
That's sixty-four on nine. I, I, you know, the state will actually take care of the truck and they, they want you to. But uh, and uh, one thing too, I wanted to, I just got the new bids on the activity bus. Something we probably need to be thinking about, you know, hitting up our county commissioners to help us with the activity bus. It's like I say, our, our newest bus is a 'oh-seven, got over a hundred thousand on it. They're still good machines, but as y'all know, we travel a lot of miles in these buses. Uh, David just mentioned, we're, we're going to be going some places in, in Rassell County. I mean, they, they travel. And uh, but right now, it looks like a, a new activity bus, a sixty-six pasture with everything we've going on it would probably be about eighty to eighty-four thousand dollars is about what a new bus would cost. So uh, with all that said, we'll go on down with the.
Eddie, let me just add, next week, we're gonna, we're gonna recognize these bus drivers. It's, the state loved the bus week and so there's some activities going to be going on to, to recognize the bus drivers. Because right now, we depend on them a lot to make safe decisions for our drivers.
Uh, thank the bus driver if you seen them because a lot of times, you know, when you see this, another bus is on icy roads, you know, and I leave it up to the bus driver because they know what, what they're capable of doing and it's a big responsibility. So there'll never be nothing said out for me if they don't go on the road and did icy. And that's a, that's a decision we kind of leave on.
Chris, do any bus drivers really have including people that do uh, activity buses?
We've got about eighty that's eligible, drivers.
That are actually driving right now.
We've got twenty-two.
Twenty-two yellow buses and what about pretty consistent activity drivers?
Uh, you have five or six consistent.
Five more than that.
Yeah, five or six consistent. But we've got about eighty eligible drivers.
Eligible drivers.
They, you know, we, we have, of course, they got their CDLs and we, we drug test them. I mean, that's federal. So uh, right here, I can just kind of pass this down. It, it's in the sheet and I just kind of wanted to tell you something about the charter buses that we do here and we've done for years. Uh, every time a charter bus is hired for Grand County, whatever time that bus is mu- comes to the campus, one of our, our crew comes down and we inspect this bus. And this is the stuff that we do on, on, on this sheet here. And it's in the book that, that Eddie's got. We look at everything on the bus. We look at all the credentials that each driver has got. We pull their logbook. I want to look at their logbook and make sure they don't have too many hours logged in. Uh, of course, we look at all the maintenance on the vehicle. We check out all the lights, tires, uh, look for oil leaks, anything like that, any damage on the bus that might cause some kind of problem down the road. But you can kind of look at it and see what all, and we do this. Now, every one of these bus drivers that come here tell me that we're one of the only counties that do this. And that, and this is supposed to have been done years ago. I'm, I'm probably thinking ten years ago it, it started, this policy, that the LEA was uh, responsible for inspecting these buses when they come. Now, a lot of times they get by because I don't know if we're contracting out a bus. So if y'all will help me and let me know when this bus is going to show up, it will, it will be there. One of us will be there to inspect this bus and uh, look at all the safety stuff on it and make sure. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you what happened here a few years ago. And I think it was when Coach Box was here. We had a playoff game and the bus come to pick up the players. Went to inspecting the bus, pulled all the records out, the insurance policies and everything were there on, on the books. I told that driver, I said, this, this ain't no good. We, we can't, you know, I can't put these kids on here. Well, when it ended up, we had to go to the bus garage and get them the facts, all the information. They had everything up hard, but they had to put it in the, in books. So, you know, that, that's, you know, I think we go above and beyond. I mean, I know that the, for this policy, the board just got to pass the policy. I, I, I think we kind of follow everything that's supposed to be done now. We get, the charter companies actually send us paperwork every, I think it's July, it starts in July. Most all charter companies go to sending us paperwork that they got all their entrances up, uh, and all their driver information, all their maintenance on their buses. I mean, we keep it on file over there, but uh, just like I say, I don't know what companies, and that's kind of why I put it out to them. And I don't know what companies they're going to use, or which ones is cheapest. So, but uh.
How about the names of the ones that you?
So we have a list that they get that you've approved that Mr. Rassell and Mr. White has access to and they know they're safe if they pick anything off that list.
Yeah. I've probably got the information from the companies that they, I kind of leave it up to them because I don't know what ones they're going to use. Because I get tons of charter companies sending them to the bus garage because they know this is coming. And it's, but they've been doing this for years. They've been sending us this information.
So this year is Travelings, which I'm in, Cherokee Boys.
Right. So, any questions?
Principals have a question for you?
I have a question. Uh, and this is curious. I know we're using Travelings for our junior trip. He's using Cherokee Boys Club for uh, the coast trip, but in the event, like I say, we have an athletic uh, event. We, we try to take activity buses when we can, but if we were to have an athletic event, uh, if these are the only two that's approved today, except the only two companies we can use to charter a bus, like on short notice? Because my understanding, the reading, it had, they have to be an approved list by the board, is that right?
That's what I was expecting to say. I think, to me, it would need to be approved by the board. From what I've read.
That's something we might need to consider uh, in the future. And I know like Youngs and Lashful is a company. They're expensive, but you can about always get a bus from them on short notice if you need to. So we might need to look at adding, you know, three or four more companies that we should, would have the ability to call.
And Young, one of them, has sent, has sent this paperwork for years to the bus garage. I mean, they're one of the companies for sure, I know. Uh, of course, Cherokee Boys love the bus. They have all of them. I always send this stuff.
So the two that are approved right now are Travelings, is that correct?
Right.
And Cherokee Boys Club. As y'all need to.
It comes up.
That's still be rolling.
It's up to date.
Yeah.
Did you say you'd be comfortable with Young as you?
Yes, yes. They, they send us information. They, they've got good machines. And just like we said, I, I don't know the prices.
Well, we'd not be the only school, like you say, looking at these same two counties, so.
Oh, yeah.
Could be.
But they would have to meet the same criteria.
There's a possibility you call them and say, we don't have anything that day, so.
And what I know we do on this inspection sheet that I passed around to you, I, I take down driver's, driver license number. I always take down a tag number and the machine number. Most of these buses have got some kind of number on it. Well, so we've got the records on, and I can check all that when we get back to the bus garage, make sure everything's good. You can look through the tires and everything they've done on the buses. They do a good job sending that stuff out.
Anybody else have questions?
Uh, so you're going to have some sort of a Love the Bus Week where you're going to be recognizing the, can you make sure, let me know. I'll give you my card, but I would really like to be there. We could do write up for the paper and.
Okay.
Credit. That would be a good shot.
It's on the website. You can uh, look on the Carolina Bus Safety website and uh.
It's the week of this, whatever next week is, sixth through the, no, whatever, tenth through fourteenth.
Yeah.
It's Love the Bus Week. So there'll be a little something daily for the bus drivers on the bus.
Uh, Mr. Chris, McLean, Chris. For myself and I'm sure for the rest of the board, we'd like to tell you how much we appreciate the work. We could have kind of been in the shape, same shape Atlanta was, with the buses stranded on the road, trying to keep those kids warm. But it is a hard job and in my thirty-seven years of education, that is the one thing I would not do. So I know where you're coming from. That's a hard job.
Wes asked me a question the other day. We went up to CNN and all this stuff happening in Atlanta. She said, what, what could you do? I said, well, if we're playing back, if we do have kids get stuck out there on our buses, I promise you, they've got enough fuel to idle for at least two or three days on them.
Good. That's good to know.
Something was to happen like that, they would idle for two or three days.
Please try.
Keep them warm, you know, and uh, God forbid something like that happens.
The, the good thing about our county, I think we've got the daddy's and uncle's and grandpa's that get out poor wipers and pick up drugs and get our kids out.
Well, last time I, I say it bad is that when we dismissed the lunch, it's been probably five or six years ago and, at lunch. And we had several buses got stuck. And thank goodness our uh, uh, all our first responders, everything come out and helped us. Of course, it was, what, six o'clock when we got everybody in, but we got everybody in safe and uh, you know, uh, it was, it was a good deal.
We've been very fortunate.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
That's just a, that's just a blessing, particularly, you know, the way we can predict the weather. That's why they came. Maybe we can try to make the best, best decisions we can.
And hopefully you'll be here the next fifty years. Do you hear any retirement talk?
No, it'll be a while before you hear that from me. I'm playing.
All right. The two thousand fourteen, fifteen school calendar is not.
Yes, speaking of calendars, um, we have, the calendar committee has recommended a calendar for, a proposed calendar for the fourteen, fifteen school year. It is in your packet. Uh, just as a reminder, unless legislation changes, uh, we may not start school before the twenty-fifth of August with students. And we have to have a calendar uh, with a hundred and eighty-five days or a thousand twenty-five instructional hours. There are no major changes from this year's calendar and the proposed calendar for next year. We have very little wiggle.
Maybe after this year, they'll start really thinking. They've got a few snow days and sales out on the coast, so.
I can hopefully, uh, honestly, I'm thinking about having a more southern weather, weather pattern and fix it a little bit more. I'll be thinking about it more, so.
Okay, Four Square Community Action Contract.
Uh, in your practice also, you received a contract. Attorney Davis has created a pact with Four Square Community Action. It's with their Head Start program. Their uh, classroom and their playgrounds sit on our property, um, behind the academy, uh, out behind Tricellini. And this is just a contract to shore that up and um, uh, it's, we didn't find a record of a contract because it's been so many years. Um, so we had to make sure that we have created. Any questions about that? They've been there for several years. I think they have four classrooms.
So this, this covers the uh, site mail use.
It does. It does. It's nothing extra. I think they have nothing extra. This is just covering the, the use that they're, they're already doing. Um, and it assumes that uh, it hasn't assumed the liability for any issues that they go on wrong or whatever. And we have a certificate of liability in front of them as well.
Uh, teacher contract, any profit and bonus pay.
Well, the, we have had much discussion about the teacher contracts and twenty-five percent bonus pay criteria. And during closed session, uh, we will again be discussing uh, the criteria and uh, maybe, maybe then that's an improvement process.
Board?
Policy first and second. On the first reading, um, policy thirty-two-hundred, it is essentially new. Um, they've been selecting instructional materials, even the title change before it was text books and um, supplement, supplemental materials. Um, paragraph, uh, page one, paragraph one, and a few new words. Second paragraph's new. A, B is new. So essentially, when you look through here, um, it is just one or two sentences from the old policy that came over. And this reflects the uh, growing use of digital resources and um, which is a reason for the major overhaul. Policy thirty-four-twenty, um, student promotion and accountability is essentially new. I have a few, a few sentences brought over from the old policy. I go page two of four. Um, that's about the same as one, page one and three are substantially changed. And uh, on the end of page three, notification of parents, number I, and on, on the page four, um, is all new. And the reason for this is that uh, it's a result of repealing the standards and uh, EOC, EOG gateways. Um, and it particularly addresses the North Carolina RETO chief program and the big change in third grade. And remember, we're passing these. The ju- the legislation came out last year, but ever so we're catching up with our policies. Um, thirty-four sixty is graduation. If you notice, I only did, the graduation policy is eight pages. I only printed a chapter of eight because the one change that the general simply just did is um, eight diploma endorsements. So um, that's brand new for twenty-fourteen, uh, twenty-fifteen school year. We could be getting that. And um, um, there's some reporting requirements because the State Board of Education has to report to the Joint Legislative Oversight Committee by uh, February one, well, by February one, twenty-fourteen. It's already passed, so. Um, it didn't. At any rate, in terms of the graduation requirements, number eight is brand new. Policy fifty-two ten, distribution of display non-school material. The majority of the changes are on page one. Then, let's see. And the remainder is the same, but the majority of the, in fact, all the changes are on page one. And each paragraph has some new sentences and guidelines and principles. Policy seventy-one twenty, employee health certificate. If you're going to the first bullet, in one, two, and three, then the next paragraph is brand new. And that's the reason for the changes, that's the complete addition right there. So that's the first reading of policies. And then, of course, the second reading are set forth in attachment as well. Thank you.
We now, by motion, will go into closed session.
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A, three, and one forty-three, three eighteen eleven C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session to receive advice from ML and Davis, Attorney for the Grand County Board of Education, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven C, I move that the Grand County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel and property matters as defined in and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A, six, and North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C, three twenty-one.